We're gonna start, Joyce. Good afternoon and welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Session of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. The meeting is called to order. I would now conduct an attendance roll call. Please signify by staying present. Councilmember Aldama?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Malnar called me. He'd just be a few minutes late. Councilmember Tomichah?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you. And I'm here, and Mayor Wires is excused, of course. Ms. Bowers, will you please introduce item one?
Council item of special interest, homeless response update.
Well, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We're very excited to present this really important topic today to get the workshop, and it'll be headed by our Community Services Director, Jean Marino, and also be assisted by Deputy City Manager of Public Safety, Rick St. John, and we also have some presenting guests as well.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide an informational update on a council item of special interest, really to provide in-depth detail about our homeless response. We, as Mr. Phelps mentioned, also have two guest presenters from some of our partnering agencies today to really talk about what's going on specifically in the downtown community, but then also what's going on here in the region. The first part of the presentation today is going to be to provide you with information around the investments to date and the strategy that we're implementing around those investments for our homeless response, specifically as it relates to the one-time emergency solutions grant funds that we spoke to council about in December and that master services agreement concept. So this first slide here just shows our homeless investment activities to date. So approximately three million was set aside by the council in December for the homeless master services agreement concept. Again, this is intended to provide a whole suite of services related to addressing the issues around homelessness and to provide some flexibility around those service providers that are the service provider or providers that are providing the services in the community so that they can provide what's currently needed in the community, not a prescribed set of services. That second bullet there, you'll see, for homeless support services, about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then shelter services, rapid rehousing, admin costs, and street outreach. That is the investments to date based on prior fiscal years as well as the upcoming fiscal year. So the three million dollars that's did to really change the way we're doing business as it relates to the provision of homeless services, but then also create the biggest bang for our buck with these one-time CARES-related funding that we've received.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
I think for the benefit of the general public, who may or may not know what the master services concept is, can you explain that they distribute that three million? Can you explain their function so that people will understand?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark. So the master services agreement concept is a request for statement of qualifications, so a solicitation essentially, to identify a homeless services provider or providers to provide a whole menu of services that is really based on the city's goals. So the homeless services request for statement of qualifications was published earlier this week. We're accepting applications. We've already, you know, have a couple of providers that are interested. But essentially, what we've identified is that the city desires a functional zero level of homelessness for veterans and chronically homeless, meaning that homelessness is rare and when it does occur, it's brief. While this is a long-term goal that may not be achievable with some of the resources available in this request, the city will evaluate proposals based on the long-term feasibility and effectiveness of the approach proposed by the applicants to achieve this goal. On the next slides, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about what is in this master services agreement concept. But again, the focus is, we recognize that as city staff, we are not the experts in all things homelessness in terms of the types of supportive services that individuals who are experiencing homelessness currently are need, so substance abuse, housing counseling, those types of things, job placement. We aren't the experts in all of that, and so we do rely on very robust partnerships with the community. Under normal circumstances, we only get about two hundred thousand dollars a year in emergency solutions grant funding, so it doesn't really go a long way. This three million dollars, because of the CARES Act funding, will allow us to create a greater impact in a shorter period of time, but it will be performance-based.
And one follow-up question. Whoever has granted the master services contract, how often will they report back to you, the city, and how often will you make that information available to council?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark, so after we receive the request for statement of qualifications, and they're basically going to describe how they would deliver on these services, we'll come to an agreement on the reporting frequency and the reporting requirements. But the expectation from the staff side is that we're going to have regular active contract management with this contract, so I would envision at least monthly check-ins to make sure that we're on target, we're troubleshooting actively problem, you know, problem-solving, so that we can make sure that we can report out. And obviously, it's going to be very important for HUD reporting as well as for reporting to council as well. So before I talk a little bit more in detail about the master services agreement, these are some of the eleven subrecipient contracts that have been issued since council provided direction back in December. So you can see there's a variety of services, many of which are shelter-related, but there is also street outreach services as well as employment services. So the homeless master services agreement, again, we're in that request for statement of qualifications phase. We're looking for homeless service providers that can provide the entire umbrella of services. That could mean that they have subcontractors providing some of those services if they don't deliver those services directly. But the idea is that if we encounter an individual who's experiencing homelessness, that the agency will be equipped to be able to provide them with any services, wraparound services, that they need to help make a difference and help change their current situation if they are willing to participate in the program. And I want to caveat that because we all know that when we deal with situations relating to homelessness, the willingness to participate in programs and the willingness to change the circumstances is driven by the individual and not necessarily by the service providers. However, I will say that just in our experience with different service providers, they do a really good job of street outreach, engaging, getting to know people that are out on the street that they're interacting with on a regular basis, and usually it takes several interactions for them to make a difference in terms of helping to get them into services. But, you know, clearly, we have the experts here at the table today, and they would be happy to answer any questions when we get to their portion of the presentation as it relates to those types of activities. So the request for statement of qualifications is based on the Built for Zero methodology. So Built for Zero is a movement, I will call it, that is led by Community Solutions. It's a nonprofit organization, has several key significant partners, one of whom is HUD, and it was founded in two thousand and fifteen, and they experienced some significant demonstrator results by two thousand and eighteen, so in their first three years of operation. And the idea here is to focus on the end goal, which is that functional zero. So homelessness is rare, and when it does occur, it's brief. But it goes beyond just point in time counts and those types of things. It really focuses on measurably ending homelessness, one population at a time. So communities can take various approaches by focusing first on veterans or, you know, other chronically homeless individuals, et cetera. But it does emphasize the use of real-time data and kind of moving away from that, and I wouldn't say moving away because it is required by HUD, but the point in time counts, we have to have better data about what's going on in our community on a day-to-day basis, and that's sort of the methodology that's included. The Phoenix region is a Built for Zero community, and they do participate, but this is some of the concepts from the Built for Zero philosophy were incorporated into our request for statement of qualifications. So this is just an example of the communities around the nation that are participating in the movement, and, you know, more information is out there on their website, Community Solutions. It's on that last page, www.community.solutions. And then this is just an example of some of the communities that have really targeted ending veterans homelessness and ending chronic homelessness. There are, you know, various communities around the country, various sizes. And again, we're not saying that this is the panacea by any means, but it is a method for approaching your homeless services that we've incorporated some of the methodologies into our master services agreement. So specifically, we're looking for performance outcomes. We want centralized communication and coordination for homeless services. So currently, we have a multitude of homeless services providers which are currently under contract, but we need the ability to bring everybody together under one sort of centralized communication. We are doing that now and formally with a few of our top key providers, and that's working out very well, but we want this to be a consistent, ongoing thematic approach to this particular subrecipient contract. And we'll be specifically looking for a decrease in the number of homelessness or number of people experiencing homelessness in Glendale. We'll be looking for comprehensive real-time data about the people that are experiencing homelessness in Glendale, and then using rapid cycle testing. And what this means is quickly test and try a strategy to see if it's going to work in your community, and if it doesn't, quickly move on and try something else. So really using that rapid cycle testing to identify the strategies that work, and then increasing the supply of the correct housing solutions. So there are a multitude of housing solutions out there that are designed to address particular types of homelessness, and understanding what's going on in our community is going to be critical to really determining what is the correct supply of housing solutions that will really make an impact and a difference, and then obviously planning for that long-term sustainability. So just a couple of administrative updates. So Mr. St. John and I are leading an executive-level task force, which includes representatives at the director level from several other departments. We convene regularly, a couple of times a month, to talk about real-time problem-solving and identify issues, do specific outreach to partners in the community or people that are offering services in the community that we become aware of and we need to do some coordination with. This has included CAS, Phoenix Ruski Mission, and Community Bridges on a regular basis to discuss very specific things related to Bonzel Park, which Mr. St. John will talk about in just a little bit. But then we're also increasing community outreach with informal organizations that we don't have a formal partner relationship with or a funding relationship with, but that we know are doing some sort of outreach for the homeless populations in our community. So a couple are listed here. We've had good discussions and conversations specifically with Marvin's missions and the work that they're doing at Bonzel Park, and how we can coordinate to get them connected to other community partners that can provide a sort of that continuum of care and that the wraparound services that are really necessary when we're providing charitable work for homelessness, for homeless people in our community.
Can you stay on this slide for a second?
Yes.
So, excuse me, if I could just add a couple of things here. To really understand where Ms. Moreno and I are trying to go today, we really need to talk a little bit about where we've been. So this council presented to the city an idea that they wanted to address homelessness many years ago, and so a multi-departmental task force, if you will, was established. I think I was an assistant chief in the police department at the time, and the chief at the time, Debbie Black, assigned me to that task force, and we began to meet and have discussions about how we were going to tackle homelessness in our community and how we were going to deal with some of the issues that we were seeing at that time. And it was a very enforcement-heavy. Now, I was a police officer at the time, and so imagine that. We were very enforcement-heavy, and so what we did is we sent our police officers into the field to address blight issues and urban camping and different situations that were occurring with our homelessness that were causing concerns for either our residential or our business community. And what we found is we were pushing the problem around. It was a little bit like playing whack-a-mole, if you will, and I know that's a terrible analogy, but I think we all understand it. So we deal with an issue at Bonzel Park, and we move them to a different park, and then we go deal with the issue at that park, and we move them to a third park, and we deal with that issue, and then they go back to Bonzel. And it was just this rotating cycle that seemed to never end and only grew. And I would say that that is the case. I think the approach that we took from the beginning, while seemed like a good approach at the time, we're now recognizing was one lane of really what needs to be a five-lane highway approach, enforcement being one lane, shelter and affordable housing and job integration being other lanes, mental health and the issue of addiction being another lane. And so there's these different programs and things that not-for-profits in our community can provide for that aren't necessarily in the city's ability or network to do, but if we reach out, establish relationship, and start creating this five-lane highway in an equal growth pattern, so we're still doing enforcement, but now we're also paying much more attention to these other things, then we believe that we can have a real impact on homelessness. And that's what this executive-level task force is intended to do, bring everyone to the table, have a discussion about what's going on in your lane, and how we can problem-solve as a team through collaboration rather than just sending the police out, hoping that people will get tired of being moved at two o'clock in the morning.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Tomichah?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. St. John. My question is, and I-
My question is, and I understand enforcement, but what, how does that work? And with this executive-level task force collaborating with neighboring cities, because you're talking about moving from park to park, but when one city goes heavy on enforcement, then they basically are just pushing people back and forth across city boundaries. So is there any talk of, or maybe it's already happening, of collaborating and other cities getting on the same page so we're not just moving people back and forth across city boundaries depending on the level of enforcement?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we are talking about a regional approach. We're talking with our sister cities. Maricopa Association of Governments is leading the conversation, so to speak, and they've come out with a list of goals that they would like to accomplish that very closely mirror what it is I'm talking about with this five-lane highway. In fact, I was, Ms. Moreno and I were in a conversation with MAG in the mayor's office, probably about six, eight weeks ago now, about this very issue and how as a region, we all need to be on the same page. Because if Glendale is doing something different than Peoria and Phoenix, we're just going to be dispersing the problem on a broader range. So we may not be moving people from a Glendale park to a Glendale park, but we are just still displacing a problem within the region. And so you're correct in that we do need to have a regional approach. Our hope is that as our executive task force begins to continue in its development, we can then bring in our sistering cities into these conversations that we're directly having about, as example, 83rd and Union Hills and the underpass and the cleanup project that we just did in conjunction with the city of Peoria. We all recognize that there needs to be a regional approach, and that is kind of the short-term but longer-term goal. It's a short-term goal, but it's not going to happen overnight. So it's a process that we're in right now to really gather everybody together and have the same discussion with the same end goals in mind.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. What are the measurables or the deliverables or the goals that you are setting that will prove this is a successful approach to the idea of regional homelessness?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, one of the measurable goals that we look at is the people that come out of homelessness and get established in not only a good financial situation, but a sustainable financial situation. And that's probably going to be our primary goal, is looking at cases individually, how they enter into the system, where they're at in the system. And it is part of the Built for Zero platform of moving people through a process that they then are sustainable long-term. And I would say it's a fairly short process. It's not years in the making, it's months. And there's benchmarks and goals that they're expected to hit. I apologize.
Okay, no, I was interrupting, my apology. Do you have a starting point? Do you know how many individuals you are beginning to deal with so that measurably at the end of your process or at the end of the year, you can say, we had X number of homelessness, homeless, and by the end of the year, we had X number taken care of and we still have this remaining?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I would love to tell you that we have an exact number. We do not. We have an idea of what the problem is based on the point in time count, but we do not believe that is giving us an accurate picture. Part of the reason why we're reaching out to bridge the gap, Marvin's mission, some other benevolent groups in our community that are doing things for the homeless, we believe they have the information we need to fully understand the problem as it exists in our city today, so then we can then accurately measure success going forward.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Moreno just reminded me, if I can continue, that part of the Maricopa Association of Governments, part of their goal is to enhance the data collection. So as a region, we also fully, we're better to understand the depth of the problem. So if we can move on with the slides, we've got several pictures of an encampment that was under a couple of underpasses at 83rd and Union Hills. If you can picture the area in your mind, there is an underpass on 83rd Avenue, and there's also an underpass for the Skunk Creek Wash that goes through there on Union Hills. Both underpasses had issues. Part of the underpass is controlled by the city of Peoria by agreement with the city of Glendale. They're responsible for some of the maintenance because they do have a bike path or a walking path that goes through that area. And so in coordination with the city of Peoria and our right-of-way services, we first had to go out and do a biohazard cleanup. We didn't want volunteers or city employees from either city going out into a dangerous situation. So we can, we have a contract in the police department for biohazard cleanup. We brought them out, they did their task, and then we came in on the back end and cleaned the debris and garbage and different things that needed to be cleaned. We also worked a little with the flood control because we didn't want to do anything that interrupted a section that belongs to flood control. And then we worked with some property owners north of Union Hills who own pieces of the area that we were dealing with. So we wanted to fully understand what their commitment was to keeping the area clean and how we can avoid having to go back out and having to clean this multiple times into the future. In other words, how do we keep the homeless from going back and re-establishing their encampment? The police department is very heavily involved in that, right-of-way was very heavily involved, and the city of Peoria Parks and Rec were very heavily involved. But as you can see from these photos, and I think we have several more that we can look at, of before and after shots, if, or I guess maybe this is the last. Okay, not several, there are four. I guess that constitutes several. The next project that we worked was Bonzel Park. As you know, Bonzel Park has had a lot of issues in the past with homelessness and continues. So I don't want to pretend that the problem is completely gone from the park, but in working with Jim Burke, our parks director, and his staff, the police department, we changed park hours, we made some adjustments to what people had access to because we were actually beginning to see damage to city property. The Ramadas were being damaged, benches were being, permanent benches were being damaged. They were breaking into a gated structure around the fountain in the center of the lake that's meant to circulate the water and encamping on that, I'm going to call it a small island. So there were a lot of issues that we were trying to address out there, and there are a lot of benevolent groups that go out on the weekends that we believe was part of the reason the homeless was being attracted to that park and then staying in that park. And so we've engaged those groups and we're having conversations about a, an event that we're going to hold, I believe it's March 21st from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. with Marvin's mission. Phoenix Rescue Mission, CBI, and then Central Arizona Shelter Services are participating with us in this event. The plan is to go out and meet the people that are accepting these services and fully understand why it is they need the services and what they hope to gain from the services. So are you just looking for a meal for the day? Do you have a pattern of different services that you go to throughout the week? So you may get breakfast at Bonzel on Sunday, lunch in the park on the afternoon from a different group. Mondays, you're at this location for a free meal. Tuesdays, you're at the Methodist Church for a free. We need to understand that. And we need to understand how they're moving around our city and for what reasons they're moving around. Because I think then we can better provide services and opportunities for them to enter into services to get them out of their situation.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you. Mr. St. John, so when you, you know, embark on an effort like you did at Bonzel Park or the very large encampment that was up in 83rd and Union Hills, which clearly illustrates that homelessness is a problem across our city, not just in our downtown. But I'm wondering whether you engage with property owners, private property owners. I know, I'm aware that there was a huge problem with Walmart, and it was super convenient for the people to go in there and take, steal sleeping bags, tents, camp stoves, that sort of thing. So do we, as part of it, because the panhandling, if you can get the property, private property owners to trespass, you know, then they can be cited for, they can be moved away, because the panhandling allows the continuation of the bad behavior in a lot of cases, anyway. The continued drug use, the continued activity that creates biohazard situations. So I'm just curious if that's part of, and I know that's the enforcement lane, but I'm just curious if that's part of the project that happens.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, absolutely it was. The police department has a very good relationship with that Walmart. We're in conversation with that Walmart. What we were finding is exactly what you said, that they were going into the Walmart to steal and/or purchase, in some cases, I hope. And then they were jumping a fence to get into this wash area. And so recognizing that that was a pattern, we engaged with the Walmart to try to curb that pattern. And then we also engaged with private property owners that were impacted north of Union Hills, as I said.
Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for following through on this request. Mr. St. John, a little bit of what you were just discussing is, is what I've observed and is my frustration is that there are too many organizations trying to do the same thing. In downtown alone, we have three organizations, four organizations that are handing out meals and some are not handing out meals but doing resources, so a little bit of both. There's organizations just down the street here that's just become an encampment. But you can't blame the individual. If that's where the resources are, that's where they're going to hang out. But there's too many replicated resources. We need to find some way, and you mentioned it here, is centralize those services. And then you have just those, I'm going to use, probably lack of a better word, is those rogue organizations that don't belong to a nonprofit and then they just want to help. It's in their heart, they're sympathized for the people, and they come to parks and they serve food. They'll pull up vehicles, trucks, tables, and they serve some really good food. If you're homeless, you're not going to turn that down. But it's organizations like that, as the other ones that I've mentioned, that how are we going, how are we going to cure that? Because everybody wants to help, everybody wants, everyone's sympathetic about it. But sometimes when you think you help people, you're making it worse for them because you're not giving them anything that's circular and it's handing them a meal and then you walk away. So you talked a little bit about it, but people that are watching, because this is what they observe, like, but we're not helping anybody by giving them a meal, walking away. So what's the solution, if there is one?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, if I can, I'm going to answer the question, but I want to back up just a little bit. In the police department, we were always trained to use what's called the SARA model, S-A-R-A model of problem solving. And in the SARA model, the first step is to scan to determine whether or not you need to invest city resources into this problem. We're clearly past that. We know that we need to invest city resources into this problem. We're in the second phase right now, which is kind of the analysis phase, where we're trying to determine who all the stakeholders are, gather everyone together so that we can all get on the same page for our response, which is the third phase. And in the response, we will need to deal with exactly what you're talking about. You can't just give someone a meal for an afternoon or a morning and think that you're helping. There needs to be clear communication with these benevolent groups, and I love the benevolence. I think we all do. I think we want people in our community that have a heart and a desire to help other people. That's what we want. But let's do it in a responsible way that hits measurable goals and standards that we want to let our community to live by. Let's not just go out and do our own thing. And so in this analysis phase that we're in right now, we are identifying the stakeholders, we're gathering people together, this executive-level task force is having these conversations, trying to help people understand exactly what you just articulated. And that is, we cannot continue to go down the road that we've been on for the last, and I'll say 10 years, but it's been longer than that. Benevolent acts have been in the community for as long as there have been people in the community. But we need to partner together with all of these groups, understand what it is they're trying to accomplish and how they fit into this regional approach. So first-city approach, then regional approach to dealing with homelessness on a larger scale. And then to Councilmember Clark's point, the last phase is an assessment. Were we successful? Or do we need to go back into the analysis phase and redevelop a new response? And my guess is, we're going to be in this iteration for a number of years where we're constantly refining our response based on our assessments and what we're finding is new in the community.
Vice Mayor, if I may. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. St. John, thank you very much for replying the way you did because that really answers the question. That's harsh. It really, I know it's harsh, but we really, truly are not helping people. So thank you for recognizing that and sounds like you have a plan. So then there's two different, there's many different types of homelessness, and homelessness is really complex. There are many, there's many of them. There's people who just lost their job, lost their home, and they're homeless. They need, they need help immediately. And then there's the chronic homeless individual who may have gone through that and has just given up. It's just, I'm done. I don't need a home. I'm comfortable here. The bus shelter is good for me. It's a safe place. If somebody tries to hurt me, I'm out in the street, there's policing. So, and then there's results or there's byproduct of those two. So if an individual or a family lost their job, lost their home, they're going to go out and search for that, for those resources. They're not necessarily, and if they do go out and camp, it's going to be short, it's not going to be long-term. Then you've got, so there's not a lot of results by way of feces and stuff like that out in the community. But then there's the long-term that have made it a, a way of their life, that this is a lifestyle now. And that's where, and Councilmember Tomachoff is correct, it's no longer a downtown Glendale issue, it is all the way north as far as you can see and go. So it's everybody's issue, but just what I'm observing in downtown, what we're missing, I know it's real difficult, is the boots on the ground. So you, city of Phoenix just received $3 billion, correct me if I'm wrong, and a lot of it will go to nonprofits, which is good and the appropriate place. A lot of it goes to administrative costs. We need to see dollars going to boots on the ground for cleaning up that stuff. So when I speak to business owners, it's, we sympathize with the homeless. It's not the individual I want to get rid of, it's the byproduct of it. They have nowhere to go to the restroom. They haven't, they have somewhere to throw their trash, but it's such a culture, they just throw it in the ground. So it's the boots on the ground, those dollars have got to get to the boots on the ground. I get hiring more staff, I understand hiring more CEOs, I understand program managing. Boots on the ground, cleaning the city, not just downtown, cities everywhere, we need to clean that. Because if we don't, we're also adding to the problem. So I know it's really difficult, but oftentimes, we get millions of dollars of grants and very few of it go to the source, like right, the aftermath, right? So.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. St. John, so a couple occasions in recent months in my district, and acknowledging that homelessness and issues are dispersed throughout the city, but a couple times in recent months in my district, residents have contacted me regarding individuals that they would notice that appear to be homeless and they're concerned about their welfare. And so I had suggested do a, you know, a call, the non-emergency number and ask for a welfare check for an individual. And I trust that our compassionate police department handles these wells, but these situations well, but maybe you could describe what does happen on a call like that? What resources, if any, are we trying to connect them with? You know, can we provide transportation if they needed to get to resources? What happens when a resident would call on behalf of someone and ask for a welfare check?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I'm going to ask Jean Moreno to help me with this answer, but I'll start by answering it this way. It depends a little bit on what Councilmember Aldama just referred to, and that's the type of situation the person is in. Are they situationally homeless? Did they just lose a job, lose a house, have some tragedy occur that created this situation? Those are typically fairly easy to deal with. You can introduce them to the resources that we have at our disposal. We have guaranteed bed space, we have relationship with CAS, Phoenix Rescue, CBI. We have case managers that work for those groups. We have our own internal staff that have relationship with resources, and we can pretty easily connect those people. If they're episodic, which means they're in and out of homelessness, just kind of based on, usually it's an age thing. So they're, they're aged out of the foster care system, for example, and now they're in and out of different people's homes trying to find their way in life. That's a little more difficult, but still easier to deal with in the chronic homeless because that person doesn't want to be living that way. They'd rather have a secure place to live and a roof over their head and a hot meal when they want one. The chronic homeless are the ones that are more difficult to deal with. So while we can offer resources like the guaranteed bed space through CAS, eventually we have to get to the enforcement piece with those folks. And that's the goal with chronic homelessness, is to make it more convenient for them to enter into services than it is for them to continue. enter into services than it is for them to continue to commit the minor crimes that are committed just by the sheer nature of being homeless. And that might be public urination or defecation. It may be littering, simple things like that, where these types of crimes, we can, and Chief Briggs is introducing a program that the City of Peoria has, that Councilmember Tomachoff and I just spoke about before the meeting, called the misdemeanor repeat offender program, which defers a punishment for lower level misdemeanor crimes for the chronically homeless if they accept services. If they don't accept services, my apologies, then they're, they're given a pretty heavy sentence. So for a crime like littering, for example, they might get 15, 20 days in jail, which is nearly unheard of outside of a program like the misdemeanor repeat offender program. But we've seen in jurisdictions, Mesa has it and Peoria that I know of, other jurisdictions may also be or have implemented. We see it as an effective way to get the chronic, chronically homeless to at least enter in and have a case manager that's walking them through a process to try to get them out of their situation. Usually addiction and/or mental health issues become a bigger problem. And if we can get them in front of those resources, get them properly medicated and counseled through case management, then we see a higher rate of success. Not perfect rate of success, but a higher rate of success.
Vice Mayor, if I may, so Mr. St. John, what you described to me strikes me kind of as a tough love approach in that chronic homelessness. And tough is, tough is hard to do for compassionate souls, but it may, it may be what it takes. And I think we've seen that in, you know, in our own families sometimes and all of that. So that's, I'm interested to see how that implements and all. Is it appropriate for a member of the public to call the non-emergency number if they are concerned about the welfare of somebody that presents to them as homeless? Is that the appropriate thing?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tom, or Turner, sorry, yes. If they believe the person is in some form of distress, then a phone call to the police department, non-emergency, to have an officer do a welfare check is appropriate. If they see that there is a family or an individual that's been routinely in an area, they don't seem to be in distress, but they are now routinely in this area, they can enter into Glendale One and request a service through Glendale One. And that would probably be a more effective tool because it's routed to the appropriate people almost immediately. So rather than going through police non-emergency, having an officer go out, and then at the end of the shift, try to figure out who they need to send this information to, Glendale One disperses that nearly, I'll just say, much faster.
And to wrap up then, and Glendale One is accessible to our residents through the internet, through their smartphone by downloading the Glendale One app, or also there's a telephone number, as I recall, that can get them in touch with that as well. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'm intrigued by this tough love misdemeanor, repeat misdemeanor. I would think for the chronic homeless population out there, doing a couple of weeks in jail is no big deal. Is that the case or no?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I think it's going to depend on the individual and what their, their individual problems are. If they are an alcohol addict, for example, I would think a couple of weeks in jail would be a little painful.
Well, that would go for anyone with substance abuse, but, but I suspect with the professional homeless class, they've been in and out of jail probably numerous times, and it's just part of their life cycle currently. So I'm, how effective is Peoria claiming this program has been to date?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, Chief Briggs is the one that's really looking into this, and I can come back to you with some statistics from Peoria. I don't have those numbers in front of me. In speaking to their deputy city manager of Public Safety, he's very excited about the program, what they've been able to accomplish in the program. They've had it for many years. And other cities are looking to cities like Peoria and Mesa who have these programs to try to model something in their own jurisdiction. And I think it's, I think we're at a point where as part of our executive level task force and what we're trying to do, this is a good component.
I would be very interested in seeing the statistics that Peoria provides. Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no further questions from the council, I'd like to introduce Lisa Glow, Chief Executive Officer from Central Arizona Shelter Services, and Teri Smith, Chief Operating Officer for the next portion of our presentation.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, members of the council, for having us here today. I also want to really acknowledge Ms. Moreno and Mr. St. John for their leadership and strategic partnership. I'm very excited about where we can go collectively together this next year. My name is Lisa Glow. I'm the CEO at CAS. I've been with the agency almost four years. I did bring some materials for you. I don't know if they've been handed out. Our 35-year anniversary magazine really lays out the history of CAS, we're the largest, longest-serving adult emergency shelter in Arizona. We also have a family shelter founded by the firefighters and the City of Phoenix and all of that. It's in there. And I brought with me as well our numbers. We do a lot of tracking very carefully. We're part of the HMIS system and MAG tracks the regional. We all feed into a similar system. We serve 5,700 people, unduplicated folks last year. We also get people into housing, and that's very critical for us. We're a housing-first program. So I will be brief because I want to leave time for Teri to talk about the Glendale Empowerment Center that's in your community and what we're doing for that, and then also answer questions. So if you look at the picture up here, that's our downtown shelter located on the Human Services Campus. We have 470 beds there, but we'll be expanding to 600 this summer because we were able to obtain approval from the City of Phoenix. The Human Services Campus filed the zoning case. We were part of that, supported it, and we're going to go up to 600 beds this summer. We are serving hundreds of Glendale residents every year at this adult shelter. We also serve Glendale residents at our family shelter, and we provide thousands of bed nights to those individuals, along with case management and access to all of our housing resources, whether it's rapid rehousing or short-term rental or travel assistance. It's really, we create programs as we identify needs. So the short-term, one-time, short-term hand-up program was created about five years ago by our staff because we know rapid rehousing isn't the only solution. There are a lot of people, they become newly homeless, they may have a job, they, they may have been evicted, and they just need that short-term hand-up. And we receive a lot of support and collaborate closely with many, many partners in the community on the Human Services Campus, here in Glendale, and so on. So this is just our overall numbers, next slide. Last year was a unique year for all of us. It brought a lot of challenges to the homeless community, but also a lot of opportunity. And we could do a lot more together by working closely. I guess I, let me pause briefly on this slide. This one is showing that we are seeing a continued rise in homelessness. I guess I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. The most significant thing I wanted to point out, though, is that we have had a big increase in street deaths throughout Maricopa County, and one-third of those individuals are over the age of 55. 51% of people throughout Maricopa County are now unsheltered. That's from the point-in-time count. We don't have enough shelter beds. And then we have rising eviction rates, affordable housing, and projections are because of the pandemic, we'll see a continued rise in homelessness. We'll be tracking that. We don't know how big it will be, but every year for the last six years, we've had an average of 20% increases in Maricopa County. So we are anticipating we'll see more homelessness. Next, please. Okay. The year of growth this last year was extraordinary with our partners and collaborators. And most importantly, we were able to keep our adults and families safe at our two main shelters through teamwork and a great team at CAS. We opened Hotel Project Haven in June of 2020, and that was opened up in a hotel. It's specifically for seniors over the age of 55. It's funded through the CARES Act by the City of Phoenix, and we'll have that through September of 2021. We've been really focused at senior citizens at CAS for the last few years because they are one-third of the individuals we are serving. I'm defining that as 55 and older. And national research projects that the 65 and older homeless population will triple by 2030. So being ahead of this is really, really important for us. Hotel Project Haven has had some tremendous outcomes. To date, we've served 194 people. Half of them have been over the age of 62, most are over the age of 55. Many of them are medically compromised. And the most important statistic out of this new, smaller, more enclosed model is that nearly 70% of them have gotten into permanent placements, many with family, and these numbers are higher than our downtown shelter numbers. And the difference is, this is a, they have an isolated room, the case management ratios are smaller, we have upfront behavioral health, and giving people a chance to stabilize in a different model on a closed campus model where they feel safe, we believe, is part of why this is so successful. So we are working to replicate that this next year. We're open to touring you for Project Haven if you are interested in coming to see it. We've had mayors and council people from throughout the region. And the reason that's important, and you'll probably hear more from MAG, is smaller specialized shelters are definitely something that we are all looking at to open throughout the region, as well as new housing models, as your, your folks have talked about. The regionalization is key because not everyone can come to our downtown shelter, and people are staying in communities throughout the region because they don't want to go elsewhere. It's their home. So how do we create the political will and the right models that neighborhoods will accept? Last year, we also opened the Norton and Ramsey Social Justice Empowerment Center in Glendale. And I'm going to let Teri talk about that in a minute, but one thing I will say is that it's allowing us to build a more comprehensive and coordinated response to homelessness in Glendale, and we're excited about what, what's going to come next from that. We also started some new programming last year in the midst of the pandemic, surveying all of our clients and being responsive to their needs. How can we help them move on more quickly? So we're doing that, and we'll continue doing that. We shored up all of our housing programs. What was remarkable is we were able to get CARES Act dollars and get a lot of people housed more quickly, and we have that data we can share with, with Ms. Moreno and others. But the outcomes were positive. So when we have resources and we have people, we can change the trajectory of our work. We also obtained approval, as I mentioned, from Phoenix to expand the downtown shelter. So what they approved at Phoenix was going, the campus was approved for 420 beds before this. The new approval from Phoenix is 700 permanent beds on the Human Services Campus, and then 200 temporary weather relief beds. CAS will be scaling up this summer to get to 600 beds, so that we're turning fewer away, fewer people away who need shelter. And vaccinations have begun, begun, we've been vaccinated, we're vaccinating the homeless, I assume in your community, Circle the City is coming to help with that. So we'll be able to start moving people back in safely when public health says it's okay to do so. We have a hospital drop-off program. I only mention that because it's also a, a model I think we need in other communities. Valley Wise has a place to take people. I don't know if you have that here in Glendale, but someone who can't get in a shelter and who's been released from a hospital, it's pretty tragic. So we'd love to see that replicated in smaller models. And we have the funding to renovate the downtown shelter. This, I just brought this picture. This is our entryway at CAS, what it will look like once it's completed. And then we have the current 470 beds. We're on, we're above 420. What it will look like will be a more positive, trauma-informed environment. And 2.4 million was allocated from the City of Phoenix to complete these renovations, as well as hire more staff to serve the 600 people. So we're excited about that. And then I think the last slide I have. Oh, that is it. So let me just say, the future. Are you sure that's the last one? What is the next one? Okay. Thank you. So the future for us in 2021, Project Haven, we want to replicate Project Haven. We've been working for a couple of years to open a senior shelter facility that's smaller. So I was speaking to one of your, to Councilwoman Clark, that's what, who had visited CAS years ago and said, it didn't make sense to her that very few senior citizens are sleeping with 500 other people. Well, we don't think it makes sense either. Project Haven as a prototype, which we'll have open through September, makes sense. So to make that permanent, we're doing a couple of things. We have a Senate bill running, Senate Bill 1514. And then if that passes, that will provide $5 million to open a senior facility in the West Valley. Doesn't mean it's in any particular city, probably going to be Phoenix, but somewhere towards the West Valley because getting into a community is not a very straightforward process. And we've had a senior program at CAS for over two years. So we have specially trained staff doing new screening tools. We're very committed to transforming the model for senior citizens. I mentioned the downtown shelter expansion and transformation. We're going to be doing upgrades to our family shelter. And before I turn it over to Teri, I just want to thank you for your time and let you know, we're committed to helping fill gaps in your community, to working in close partnership with other agencies, and to bringing new resources to Glendale, as well as leveraging the resources that we have for the greatest impact. So I'm happy to answer questions or have Teri talk about the Glendale Center.
So I just have a very few slides. Thank you very much for having us today. I don't know if you have been to the Norton and Ramsey Social Justice Empowerment Center. It is literally, you can see it from the parking lot that I parked in. It's very close by. It is a regional, multi-agency collaborative model. So very much in keeping with what Ms. Moreno was talking about with regard to built-for-zero methodology. It's an opportunity for different providers to share the same location, but to begin to work individually with people who are struggling either with homelessness or they're vulnerable for, for becoming homeless. And so that's one of the unique things about the empowerment center is that we're going to be able to work with people in the community, families within the community that are on the edge, and to try to help them regain housing, to maintain housing, to provide vocational opportunities to them before they become unsheltered. So right now, we provide, our housing support services are there. There's outreach coordination. There will be employment and educational opportunities beginning April 1st. We're going to be looking for behavioral health services to be supported there. There's ministry outreach, basic showering opportunities for people there. Again, a collaborative, multi-agency approach. An underpinning of this multi-agency approach is that we are a trauma-informed organization. We care and we understand that trauma is considered pervasive, and homelessness is considered a trauma-related event in a person's life. And so what we do is we try to care for people in a way that addresses all of the concerns that this person would have. And so a trauma-informed environment is one that looks at the environment, that looks at all things that are concerned with that individual, to try to help put things into place and help them resolve their concern, in this case, being unsheltered or on the verge of that. We share that philosophy with those people who, other agencies that work at the empowerment center, so that would be the Phoenix Rescue Mission, Project ID, several other organizations. I just kind of wanted to point out what the, currently who the other providers are at that location. So we are working with the Phoenix Rescue Mission. They do use the facility for their We Work program that they work with the City of Glendale with. They will be providing educational and vocational opportunities at the center beginning April 1st. CAS supports those clients with, with housing and case management services as well. Project Homeless ID comes to the location as well. This is a huge thing if you're an unsheltered person, that you have no identification. It's the very first step to becoming honed again, getting permanency. You have to have your identification. And so they are onsite to help provide those services. Last week was the very first week that Circle the City was there. So Circle the City provides medical care for the unsheltered. They are coming once a week to the empowerment center. Those people who participate in the We Work program are able to immediately make an appointment with them and see them on that day. Other people who are receiving services at the empowerment center can also receive medical support services. This is not a walk-up opportunity.
It is really-
It is really providing services for those people who are getting services with, through the empowerment center. So kind of addressing some of the things that you guys had mentioned in your talk, it is a little bit of a carrot approach, that these things are available if we can help move you forward to address some of your issues. And I think that might be my last slide. Do you have any questions for either one of us?
Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for coming, ladies. I've been to CAS, and I think the first, the most overwhelming thing is just the number of people that are there. And it's, and the problem since I've been down there has grown. I mean, the number of people that are just living outside of CAS has grown. So thank you for the work that you do in our community. It's appreciated. Lisa, you said the age of 65 and over is going to triple by 2030. And I think the elephant in the room is, this is, there's all kinds of crises at play here. Affordable housing, I'm imagining that that's what the big issue for 65-plus is. Primarily fixed income individuals. We have a housing crisis, period. I mean, regardless of affordability, we have a housing crisis, period, in our community, especially affordable housing. So, I mean, the biggest way to manage a forest fire, which is kind of what we're dealing with, is to not let the fire get any bigger. So how does, how does that perspective of trying to prevent homelessness so that we can manage the homeless population that we have, but not, try not to grow it as we are literally in the middle of a housing crisis?
Yes. Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Tomachov, that is a huge underpinning as to why so many elderly persons are becoming homeless. Their rent goes up, their income is fixed, they're no longer able to get back in the workforce, and they find themselves homeless. A huge percentage of those with us. So addressing affordable housing is the elephant in the room. We are advocating always for more resources. The bill this year at the state legislature through the Housing Trust Fund did pass out of Senate appropriations week before last, which would be one part of the solution, a small part, to get more of those Lytec project dollars out so more affordable housing can be built. I think something that Ms. Moreno was saying, more creative solutions and options. We can't wait to build the housing that we need now. So what are, one of the things we really think that's needed is more transitional housing. So emergency and transitional. Senior citizens stay longer in our shelter. In a way, they're in transitional housing. By making Project Haven permanent, and our goal is to have something between 100 and 140 units, that's 140 people who don't have to stay in downtown Phoenix, who are getting a more focused service. We think we need more of those smaller, specialized, regional, and I almost don't want to call them shelters, but hybrid models. We're in conversations with a lot of people that are looking at doing this. The dollars from the state are needed, but we need to do things now. Hotels are certainly, with CARES Act money, one of the exciting opportunities that could evolve. So I know that the City of Phoenix set aside $14 million out of their CARES Act pot for permanent type of solutions, and hotel purchases can be considered with that. The City of Phoenix also has a goal for their affordable housing to build 50,000 units by 2030, either build or refurbish. So starting to set some of those bold goals, and then how to get there. I think a lot of the work that MAG is doing, that I think ASU and others are going to be doing, are going to be helping us tackle this. As a frontline provider, we want to get people off the streets now. And the fact that so many of us were able to, we opened the Project Haven Hotel, some smaller hotels opened, and we did it quickly. There were resources, says to me, we can come up with some better interim solutions. When someone gets off the streets and starts to stabilize, that's the first step. We have to get more of them off the streets. We need people out there, councilmen, to help get them off the streets. But we have to have, we have to have a place for them to go. Otherwise, we're just going to put them back on the streets.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you both for the work that you do for the greater community and for Glendale specifically. I think my question is more directed toward Deputy City Manager St. John and Ms. Moreno. It sounds like what CAS and Norton are doing are exactly what we're proposing to do with our $3 million. What, what are the specific differences? I don't want to be spending money to reinvent the wheel if we have successful models out there. So what are you proposing to do that is complementary to or different from what CAS? I especially like the idea of these hybrid homeless shelters, because I think that is the wave of the future. I love Norton's approach to providing a one-stop shopping center where people can get access to various resources that may meet their needs, because they may have one particular need and not necessarily a lot of others. So please, tell me what you're, what are you going to be doing that's going to differentiate you from what they are already doing?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark, after today's presentation, I'll be certain to send you the link to the, to the request for statement of qualifications. But what we're looking for is exactly that, to have that one-stop provider. In addition to some of the things that are-
Let me interrupt you for, and I'm being rude, and I'm sorry, but you're talking about this one-stop shop provider. So wouldn't it make more sense to pour resources toward Norton? To achieve that very goal immediately, rather than reinventing the wheel and starting a new program?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark, we are hopeful that CAS will submit a request for statement of qualifications. We've had preliminary conversations with a number of providers that we believe have the experience in providing holistic services. But we want to make sure that we are, you know, running some sort of a request for statement of qualifications process. We're not, we're not imagining reinventing the wheel. We are imagining that service providers exist in our community today that can provide all of these services. There are a multitude of agencies there that either, on their own or through existing partnerships, have the ability to provide this menu of services. The difference between what we are proposing with master services agreement versus what's occurring at the empowerment center is we're looking for a way to ensure the centralization of need. As Councilmember Turner had requested, what do we do with somebody who, you know, is experiencing homelessness and they need some help? We want to have one centralized place for people to go. Currently, we have multiple street outreach contracts. And so we want to be able to funnel people to one specific provider for all of these services. But the, the program design, where we try to leave it somewhat open and request that respondents provide this information about how they would provide these services. But it does speak specifically to creating that efficient delivery system, addressing all three, all three types of homelessness, the situational, episodic, and chronic. It talks about different variety of housing options and those types of things. So I'll be happy to share the detail of that request for statement of qualifications. I believe it will be enlightening for the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Malner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had just a couple of questions, kind of along the lines that some others have brought up. But first, I wanted to ask, what have we learned from some of the larger cities around the country? We've heard a lot of stories. I haven't personally, well, I have personally seen some, but haven't really seen the homelessness. But I'm understanding it has greatly expanded, significantly more than what has happened in Arizona. What have we learned from those cities? What they were doing that didn't work, and what they did do that does work?
Vice Mayor, Councilman, I will share my perspective, and I, Teri and others, they may have input on this. So over the last number of years, some of the cities that had massive mega-shelters have, Salt Lake City being the most notable, have closed their large mega-shelters and opened smaller, specialized shelters. That was pre-pandemic. Better service for people. And I think, I'd need to go look at their data and outcomes, but I do believe it's a better model. That's, that's one thing. California, which is continuing to explode. What I do know during the pandemic, their hotel model kind of flopped because they gave people keys and said, here you go. So they ended up with meth labs and different things. That's completely different than the model of service you need. You need to have accountability and support for people. New York continues to grow in their homelessness as well. And one thing I do really like that they're doing is more front-end triage, trauma assessment. They've created a different kind of model. And we need more of that, I think, in our community with Project Haven. By having behavioral health upfront, it's a demonstration of a better model, but we need something bigger, I think, to scale. We're working on becoming an access provider at CAS and doing those upfront assessments. That's an important part of it. Not everyone's going to want to take services upfront. But when you offer them and educate people, you're going to be able to get more connected. I don't know what else is jumping out. I'm going to let others jump in here.
I was just going to say, one of the things I think that Lisa has been to recently, actually pre-pandemic, was in San Antonio, for example. They actually have a large shelter. But within that large community of people, they have many smaller communities on the same campus. And so in effect, what you are seeing as most successful are these smaller, more population-specific kinds of communities where you're able to address the needs of those individuals more systematically. And you build in this natural accountability that is part of our human nature. We do better when we're accountable.
That, I forgot. Thank you, Teri. Haven for Hope in San Antonio, I did visit there. They have an outdoor courtyard, and then they have, it is a beautiful campus. It is pristine. They've got a building for men, a building for women, LGBTQT families. And it, and high accountability. We're a low-barrier shelter. They have a much higher barrier. People want to keep the lower barrier so you get people off the streets. But when I say higher barrier, people have to, they cannot be drunk when they come in. So they have to blow into the, whatever you call that. Breathalyzer, thank you. So it's a different, but it's an effective model. And I did visit another place, Community First Village in Austin. Thank you, on my memory today. And that's a tiny home village, and it's a permanent solution on the outskirts of Austin for the most chronically homeless. It was remarkable. And it was integrated living with people, and you can Google them too, integrated with people who are called missionaries, people who live there and for a year and help support the community, and they have vocational training. I know that there are some housing providers looking at doing new models like that. So part of the comprehensive planning that MAG is doing and others are involved in keeping these conversations alive, I think we'll figure that out. But you asked a great question, and I know bits and pieces, but we probably need some additional HUD and consulting expertise for our community.
Thank you for that answer, if I may, Vice Mayor. To, to address a little bit the issue that Councilmember Aldama mentioned. Within your own organization, how much do you use volunteers? And what is the cost? I mean, are you saving money by doing that? And can that model be expanded?
Actually, CAS has limited volunteers. I think that's an area that we really can grow in. I have worked with other organizations that work with the unsheltered that have high numbers of volunteers, that they are specifically trained. They understand what a mentoring relationship is. They have a very specific scope in terms of what it is that they do. And actually, it can be very encouraging to, to the clients. The other thing that is also very effective, and we've actually really talked about this in terms of, with our expansion, is a peer, having peer counseling, where you have people who have struggled with being unsheltered. They become trained as a peer counselor. It's a certification that you get here. And then they come alongside other people to walk them through their experience and use their own life experiences to help move those people forward. So actually volunteering, that's an area that I think CAS can grow in. But I have seen it be very successful with other organizations.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I do want to say Teri Smith, our COO, came, she worked at Phoenix Rescue Mission for several years, and so is bringing a lot of innovation to us from that model as well. And volunteering being one area. People have to have fingerprint clearance and certain things for working directly, so.
There's some hurdles that are sort of built in.
We can do, we can do better, though.
And I bring that up because, you know, it was mentioned by Councilmember Aldama about the costs of nonprofits and administration. And you're growing your facility up to 700 beds. Again, you're going to have to have more administration, more, you know, oversight. And if you could fill some of that in with volunteer. And the other thing I'd like us to consider looking into is, you know, we do have the chronic homeless folks. And many of those have medical issues, whether it's mental or physical. And that, that is why they can't seem to grasp getting into a home again. It's just beyond their capability. And it would seem to me that, that with our large medical facilities around the state, that we should be able to garner some volunteer physicians to help with that process. Because to me, the, the chronic homelessness is the main problem. We are dealing with and can deal with, and you're doing very effectively with, with the families and those who, who just happen to be in a bad spot, and now you're helping them. And I think that's critical. And we need to continue those programs. But the chronic homelessness is our problem. And we need to find a solution to that. And, and it's going to take, we could spend all the money in the world. So I'm going to ask you a question. If money weren't the problem, how could you fix our chronic homelessness problem?
Well, we both look at each other.
From my experiences, a significant part of that is actually something that was mentioned earlier. And that has to do with substance abuse. And there, it's undeniable that that is a, a real tragedy in our culture. And so really and truly, if I had to pick one thing that I was going to say, I'm going to work on this one thing because I think it's going to affect the lives of the unsheltered, it would have to be substance abuse. That, that, if that could be, if there is a way to determine how to control that or help with that, whether it's through behavioral health on the front end, or whether it's through mandating, you know, jail time, because that's a great way to get sober, but hard, right? That, those, those things are the, I think, the underpinning of much of what you see with the chronically homeless. I mean, that's one, one thing that I would say.
So, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, let me, Salt Lake City decided they were going to solve chronic homelessness. They took it on and said they were moving the needle, but they didn't. So it's a study in, you know, trying to take it on in a way that didn't work. I don't have all the reasons for that, but it didn't work. So it is a big question. I think we need, something you were saying, we need healthcare at the table. United Healthcare and the healthcare funders have created the Home Matters Grant Process. And United Healthcare actually is doing some significant work in Maryvale, where they have, they, they lent money to Chicanos Burla Causa, 400 apartment unit. 100 of the units are United Healthcare. I think it's 100. And they take some very chronically homeless persons that are high healthcare users in their access system, and they put them there. And that is one piece. I think we need more of that, those kind of models replicated. Because we can take on a certain component of it, but I think the healthcare community can be an even bigger component of it. They have resources, and they can identify their high-end users who are most chronically homeless. So it's going to, a multi-tier approach. Yeah, that is a very complicated issue, for sure.
This is a very complex issue. And I did want to say that there are organizations in Phoenix who do provide volunteer medical and dental service. Like the Neighborhood Clinic is one of those. And they, for years, have been volunteer physicians, volunteer nurses, volunteer dentists, hygienists who go and provide those services for, I think it's a nominal fee that a client would pay, but a very nominal fee. So there, there are some very creative approaches to this. So there are some very creative approaches to this. I did want to say one thing to Councilwoman Clark, because I think you asked a really good question. How do we know if we've moved the needle? And one of the things that I try to explain to people is that, in many ways, the homeless population is like a bathtub where the faucet is on and the drain is open. So you have this influx of people, and they're collected in this bathtub, and there is some issuance. I mean, there are people who leave the situation, but there seems that the bathtub constantly has people in it. So in other words, you can be very successful, and yet your bathtub can remain somewhat full. So that's why part of what I think that Ms. Brandon was talking about is that you have to identify populations and see if you can see the needle move within those populations. Right? So just a thought.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just had a couple more quick questions. What, I really liked the comment that Mr. St. John made about accountability and in the chronic, and I would just really urge you to come up with some creative ways of holding accountable the chronic homeless individuals, because I think that is really critical as well. And the last question I had was, you know, after, the staff mentioned these cleanups that we did, what happened to those individuals that, since then, since we have done that cleanup? Did we just chase them off, or has there been some grounds gained with the individuals that were living under the bridges?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, we have engaged every individual that was living under the bridge, introducing them to resources. To my knowledge, very few have accepted resources and have simply moved on.
All right, thank you.
Aldama.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm a realist, and I know that, this sounds horrible, but I just truly don't believe that the chronic part of homelessness will, will anyone ever solve, because you can't and I can't control anyone's abuse of substance or their substance abuse. Just can't control it. If you solve someone's today, there's somebody to follow and it just continues. And so even organizations your size, and if another organization was here, I'd ask them the same thing, but you're here, even organizations your size throw your hands up in the air and say, yeah, we're done, we can do. And if you said no, I would challenge that, but the reason why I say that is because I too toured your facility in Phoenix. It's great, it's awesome. But what I learned was, and I took away, is that there's also criteria for individuals to go through that program. Not just anyone off the street can walk, knock in your door and say, I'm in your program. Because of that criteria, and I understand you have to have criteria, but because of that criteria, if somebody come to your door and they didn't meet that criteria, your hands go up in the air, can't help them, they're gone, it just keeps going, never ends. So talk a little bit about the criteria that someone has to meet to get into your program in your facility in Phoenix, because that's really important, because if I'm a chronic individual, I probably can't meet it, and you're just going to throw me back out in the street.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I will speak a little bit to that, and then I'll turn it to Terry. So I mentioned briefly, we're a low barrier shelter. You do not have to be clean and sober, you do not have to have identification, you do not have to accept services. So it actually is pretty easy to get in, and then you come through coordinated entry. There are certain rules, and I'll let Terry talk about this, expand on this, we don't allow weapons or violence or drugs to be brought in the facility, but you can, you can be drunk, you can be on drugs, we don't test you for that. So our goal is to get people off the street and start to try to engage them in services. So you probably could get in very easily, although we would try to find you a home, a place to go. We try to divert you because we'd say, ah, we think you.
We'd be on the coordinated entry.
Oh, go ahead, Terry. I'll let you.
Right, so just for clarification, so CAS is actually just the shelter. The campus is the Human Services Campus. So when you go down and you see the Human Services Campus, you might see, there could be tents along the street there, that is part of the Human Services Campus. CAS is the shelter on the campus. So there's a number of nonprofits, so we're the shelter. So you have to go through coordinated entry, and you have to be considered homeless in order to come into CAS. That, I would say, is the requirement, and that has to be determined by, there's a matrix, actually, that we have to comply with to identify who those people are. But once you, once you get through coordinated entry, as Lisa said, you can be high, you can be drunk, you cannot bring those substances into the building. You cannot bring recreational marijuana, despite what the laws are for the state, because we have a federal guidelines that we have to follow. So you cannot bring those things with you into the building. You will actually acknowledge that you can't have them, and if you have them on your person, they'll be removed from you. But beyond that, you don't have to participate in programming, and we have a lot of people who choose not to participate in programming for housing to become housed. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we have a very high bar. Is there a bar that, I mean, I've been missing something that you're thinking about?
So when, and I think you have a different CEO at the time, and we had this conversation, and it might have changed, but the coordinated entry, if anybody fails to complete any of those steps, you're back out, correct? And it's a coordinated entry that's real difficult. I mean, any course of action is difficult, but it's when they get to that point where, yeah, and there's nothing you can do. I get, I'm not blaming you, it's just, everybody has their criteria that have to be met.
Yes, I think that, I understand what you're saying. We need more lanes and entry points for people. Absolutely, and this is actually something in the provider community that a lot of us say openly, that coordinated entry, there are too many people who can't come in through that way. So what other options do we have for people? I know, and I'm not in charge of coordinated entry, but I know what they really do is try to get people to other options. Can they divert them back home somewhere? Could they give them support to get back to a family, get back onto someone's couch if they can, because we don't have enough beds for everybody? So they're working hard to try to find a place. If someone doesn't score as high on what's called the VI SPDA, let's say they score low because they have other options, they're not going to refer them to CAS for a bed. So we have a one-lane highway, and we need four lanes, we need more housing options. And once they do come to CAS, I will identify another problem for all of us, which is, we can't, it's a conglomeration, trying to be one-size-fits-all to people with serious mental health, senior citizens, veterans, youth who've aged out of foster care. That's where the more specialized, smaller, focused services absolutely make sense, like the model in San Antonio. So we know there's, we can, we need to transform the model, and we need to open smaller, specialized, focused places, and we need more lanes on the highway for people to get into.
Vice Mayor, if I just may wrap up on one last, and I'm probably premature here because I know our staff was going to mention it, but Councilmember Turner mentioned some, made some comments that is bringing me to this point. Can our staff talk, to those who are watching and those who are going to be recording this and watching it later, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal and why the city and other organizations, our hands are tied. There's, we can do things, but then there's, you know, I get calls all the time, hey, get this, these homeless people out of the park. And so will our staff, just for those who are watching, explain why our hands are tied in not just moving anybody from anywhere in the city?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, excuse me, you're correct. There was a case that came through the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals a while back that basically said it was inhumane to not allow someone to sleep in public, on a public space when there was no other area for them to be. And so what we've done as a city with our urban camping ordinance, which is what you're referring to, it's very difficult to enforce that ordinance when we don't have a place that's guaranteed that people can go and be safe and sheltered. We have entered into a contract with CAS for guaranteed bed space. The space is available until 4:00 PM, but that doesn't mean that we can't make an offer past 4:00 PM for someone to receive resources. So what we have to document in order to enforce urban camping is that resources were offered and reasonably available, and that those resources were refused. And then we can enforce our urban camping ordinance or any other provision, for example, park hours being closed after 7:00 or 10:00 PM, depending on the park, or sunset in some cases. We can enforce when we have made a reasonable offer that's been refused.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Turner. I know we have several more slides to go through, but I do have a few things maybe to bring up at this point. As we've been discussing, there are different, many different causes for homelessness, and part of it is simply the rising price of staying sheltered. We're, I think, pretty familiar with the spike that we're seeing, and we don't know if it's a spike or if it is a trend line that's going to continue. Is this a bubble in housing costs that's going to burst, or is it going to continue? But the same thing's happening in the rental market. Apartments that were $600 a month a few years ago are now $900 or $1,200 a month. And we know that the other side of the equation, incomes, haven't kept pace with that kind of housing inflation. And in fact, during this particular pandemic crisis, we have people that are, have lost jobs altogether or who are working less. Even if they're remaining employed, they're working less, you know, particularly in the hospitality industry. So we, and maybe it'll come up later under the MAG model, but we have to look at different ways of providing housing. One of the things, we didn't always have a homeless problem that was anywhere near this size, okay? This is something that we've been, an increasing problem we've been dealing with over the last 30, maybe 40 years, but it came with the destruction of the single-room occupancy hotels, and we haven't replaced that. You know, that urban renewal that got rid of that in our inner cities, put a lot of people out on the streets, and we haven't found a model to replace that. Also, the pushing people out of the housed mental health facilities has helped immensely in this. We haven't done anything about figuring out how to deal with that, really. And ideas float around, such as tiny house communities, alternative dwelling units in people's backyards and that sort of thing. But I haven't seen that cities, and I'm looking at us, we haven't made that kind of housing more realistic in our communities through the changing in zoning codes and building codes and things like that that would allow for that. So we have that role as well. Two things, that was my speech, now I have two questions. And so the first would be, with this project of the Project Haven Hotel concept, I'm concerned that that's not really a permanent solution either. These are hotels that are available because of the pandemic and have low occupancy. We hope to see that change and tourism return, and are we going to be losing that temporary, is that in fact temporary housing, or are they going to be permanently converted? So that's one question. The other is significantly more local, and that's with the Norton-Ramsey Social Justice Center. Admirable, good quality, you know, good things that we're doing there. I'm concerned that wasn't really a holistic approach. I'm concerned about its location, the impact that it has on our business community and our neighborhoods. It's, we have residences and schools and all of that right around it as well. Are you perceiving that to be a permanent location? I know it was a convenient location because the facility existed, and through the generosity of community, a community member became available, but I would, I'm concerned that it's, is it going to, do you envision it as a permanent location? Is it becoming a magnet to bring more homeless into our downtown for referrals, but then who end up staying? And then also on the Glendale Works Program, that again, looking at us, that's our program. I understand that it has, that the Ramsey Center has become the pickup and drop-off location for that, and I'm concerned that that's not necessarily the best for the business and the residential community, as you say, within sight of us today.
So let me answer your second question first.
Okay, go ahead.
First, so we have been working very closely with our neighbors at the Empowerment Center to be responsive to their concerns about this. So one of the things in the case of the Glendale Works Program is, after clients are brought back, they receive their pay, they may take a shower. They are actually literally transported back to their original pickup location, which is, I'm not exactly sure which church they pick up from, but they actually are transported away from the Empowerment Center. When I envision the Empowerment Center at full capacity, there are no lines of people waiting outside. It is a resource center where people come to receive a resource and then they leave. There is no food that will be given out at the Empowerment Center. So we're really trying to minimize anything about it that would look like a hangout for those people that are unsheltered. I'm very open to any input that the community and the council might have in terms of solutions to that problem, but we are very intentionally not providing services that would attract people other than to move them forward in permanency.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I want to say a few additional things. So the property was given to us by Bob Ramsey and Jenny Norton when they got a call from someone who wanted to buy it, who said, there are so many homeless right around my business here that you should sell it to me at a bargain. And that, at that point, Ramsey called me and said, I want to give you the building because we want you to go in there and help reduce the problem. So that is our commitment. That said, if at some point there were a building that the city wanted to trade us and give, and maybe we could open up some shelter beds, we'd be open to anything like that, some sort of a building swap as well. If it really became a big concern, but as Terry said, our commitment is to not have that happen. We're not doing feeding and things around there that are going to attract folks. And I do agree with you, we want it to be holistic services, and as it evolves, that is the goal. It's the goal to help people get back into housing, do more prevention, the vocational job training. Also, St. Joseph the Worker wants to have a person in there connecting people to jobs. So we want it to be responsive to the community and not a burden. Terry meets every month with the neighbors. There's a commitment, and when there were issues raised, they were immediately addressed. So we want to keep the dialogue going. Maybe an even bigger, better facility that we could go into would become available, and we, as part of the solution, as you look forward to what you want to do. On the hotels, the hotel where we have Project Haven will go back to being a hotel at the end of September. It was never envisioned to be permanent. It's a very nice hotel, it's been, it's been wonderful. The investment in hotels that Phoenix and other, other cities and other states have invested in hotels as permanent shelter solutions, hotels that are struggling and want to sell, I personally think it's a great solution for senior citizens and medically vulnerable persons. We have a lot of senior veterans we envision going into the permanent hotel solution, so having their own room, or maybe some of the rooms are shared, and having a new model, it's worked well as a temporary solution, so we are thinking it would be a good permanent solution, and also cheaper than having to build from the ground up, potentially a lot cheaper.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, I do want to say that I have heard that the Norton-Ramsey Center, you have been responsive to the community when
Thank you, great.
issues were raised, and I trust that you'll continue, continue that. But I just wanted to get a sense of, is this, you see this as a long term, or are you open to, you know, working with the community to, you know, to find perhaps a better, or, you know, a better location, both for the, your clients that we want to serve and also for the neighborhoods as well? And maybe the West Valley legislation for housing, you know, for a shelter out in this area, you know, if that comes to fruition, that could also be a locus for this. I keep thinking about St. Luke's Hospital, and I know that it's in essence on standby now due to the COVID pandemic, but I've felt for years that it was ripe perhaps for conver- But I've felt for years that it was ripe perhaps for conversion into a shelter, a single-room occupancy type of a situation. And it shouldn't be all that difficult to convert over. But thank you all for now.
Can I say just one more thing? Because I really want to acknowledge what you said earlier about the SROs back in the 80s. There were 14,000 units. It's in our 35-year report that were taken down and then homelessness escalated. And we're having the same thing happen. So we do need to have different housing options, affordable housing, maybe SROs start to come back, and also the closing of the mental health institutions. Those two things led to tremendous influx in homelessness. And I think it's important to know our history. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. If there are no further questions for our guests from CAS, thank you very much, ladies, for presenting today.
Thank you.
It's been a true pleasure, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you. Next up, we'd like to invite Amy St. Peter. She is the Deputy Executive Director for the Maricopa Association of Governments. And Amy has been working diligently since probably the beginning of December on really bringing together all of the stakeholders throughout the region, across all sectors, to discuss this issue on homelessness and how we can arrive at a regional strategy. And so welcome, Amy. And we'll turn the presentation over to Ms. St. Peter.
Great, thank you very much, members of the council. And thank you very much to Ms. Moreno. We appreciate your leadership in this space, the way that you're spending a lot of time on this today and as you have over the past few years, really thoughtfully considering what are the main issues. Your leadership in this space is very important. We are very honored to have your participation. And the staff support that Ms. Moreno is providing is just unparalleled. Really thank her for all of her leadership and her partnership in this space as well. The goal of my presentation today is to be able to offer a bit of information about these regional efforts. I've heard that referenced a number of times throughout the presentations. It's really good to hear the level of interest in these topics. And so I'd like to be able to offer some context in terms of what we're doing at that regional level to be able to assist in this area. The best regional plans are deeply embedded in and very much validate those local priorities. So we want to make sure that we are hearing what your priorities are and that those are reflected in all of these regional efforts. And so I'll be sharing a little bit of information with you about that today. And appreciate any questions or feedback that you might have throughout the process. In terms of the regional efforts, we are very focused on how do we do, how do we reduce any redundancies? I heard some concern about not being coordinated. And so we're very focused on how do we help support that level of coordination that will be really critical to these efforts moving forward as efficiently and as effectively as possible. We also want to make sure that we're covering any gaps. We don't want to leave areas without homeless assistance programs. We see every community as really having a vital role in this work throughout the entire region. And in particular, we're looking at real change, not spare change. So I did hear concern as well about the very, very well-intentioned, the compassionate work that's going on that can very unintentionally sometimes create barriers for people accessing services and being able to enter into housing in a stable and sustainable way. So these regional efforts then are guided by four main principles. The first is that this work is regional. Homelessness is inherently regional in terms of its geography as well as its impact. And so we want to make sure that we are geographically dispersing homeless assistance programs throughout the entire region. This work is also inclusive. We're undertaking this work very much with a racial equity lens. We know from our research here that particularly African-Americans are overrepresented in the homeless population four times their, the number of their population in general who are not homeless. Native Americans also, twice as much in the homeless population as they are in the general population. So we're undertaking this work with that lens in mind as well. We need to make sure that this, that this work is accountable. We need to be able to demonstrate progress and be able to show to you that we are making some progress and showing successes. And when we're not, we will pivot. And we will make sure that we're learning from those lessons and that we're moving forward in a much, in a much better direction and that these are sustainable. Our investment in this space is long-term, and we are thankful for your partnership in this regard. I do have some slides I'd like to share with you. I encourage you, please do stop and ask questions anytime. And in particular, I really would welcome the opportunity to hear more of your guidance throughout this presentation. We are starting to prioritize the draft strategies, and we want to make sure that your priorities are absolutely represented in that regional portfolio of work moving forward. This work started to ramp up just in past October. The Maricopa Association of Governments has staffed the Continuum of Care, and by virtue of that, has been engaged in homelessness since 1999. By October, these, these issues around homelessness were absolutely reaching critical mass and becoming a crisis. And so we started to ramp up these regional efforts. We started to deepen this work, broaden this work right away. So this is just some of the work that's been completed. I heard some great questions around research and in terms of those national best practices, we have some great information on that. We've also started off with a local inventory. And so we found it important to really embed this work within the local plans that are already in place as well as the priorities that are emerging. So we have a local inventory that comprises more than 300 different strategies. Funding was absolutely first and foremost in our minds. We want to make sure that we can not just plan this work, but we can implement this work. Our communities need solutions right now, and people who are living on the streets and experiencing homelessness need, need relief right now. And they need that path to housing in a sustainable way. And so we're very focused on that, making sure that we keep funding right in front of our radar. We are continuing actually to conduct interviews. We have one scheduled with, with Ms. Moreno and her staff. We'd be happy to meet with any of you as well. The outreach on this is critically important, and we are making sure that we're building capacity within MAG and within the Continuum of Care as well as in the communities that we're working within.
Vice Mayor, with regard to your previous slide.
Yes, ma'am.
And the work that's been completed, your first bullet, national research on most effective practices.
Yes.
Can you name one effective practice that national research has identified?
Absolutely. I can name a few that I'd like to highlight. I would encourage you as well, we do have deeper policy briefs on six main strategies that we found to be particularly effective. That includes really focusing on housing. So how can we get people into housing in the most efficient manner possible? There are a number of different options for that, such as shared housing, rapid rehousing, housing-first models. All of those are brought to bear and been shown to be very successful. Also, it's critically important to offer those wraparound services. I heard a lot of conversation around behavioral health and substance use. Those are critical issues that need to be resolved. But we're finding that once people are in housing, they're able to stabilize in all other areas much more successfully. So those wraparound services are critical to provide along with that housing. We're also finding that systems integration is critical as well. I like the, oh, I think she left, the bathtub analogy, you know, the fact that we always have this inflow as well as a more moderate outflow. And some of our systems are creating more people who will experience homelessness, such as the foster care system. So wanting to make sure that we're working very closely with them, we found the schools in particular to be a very enthusiastic partner. They have a lot of data that frankly has not been fully integrated into the homeless management information system, which is our centralized database. A lot of opportunities right there to work very closely with the schools. I had mentioned really applying this work with a racial equity lens and making sure that we don't have any inadvertently unjust policies that are making it more difficult for some to obtain housing and to be able to maintain that housing. And also data-driven, real-time. I cannot emphasize the importance of this enough. There are a number of communities who are very successfully implementing this approach that helps them to better understand the challenges that are being faced by people who are experiencing homelessness as well as those who are at risk. They're able to, in real time, understand exactly who is homeless, how many people, and in what populations. And there's one community in particular where they noticed a spike. And that spike was in real time. And so they're able to intervene very quickly, figure out what was causing that spike, put some intervention measures in place, and then bring that spike back down. And so they're able to continue that decrease in the numbers of people who are experiencing homelessness. We don't yet have access to that. We are meeting weekly with the Crisis Response Network, who is a lead agency for the homeless management information system, to make that data available. We're also utilizing other data sources, such as from our outreach teams. They're putting in the geo-coordinates when they encounter someone who's experiencing homelessness. So we're able to map that out on a regional basis. And that's been a much more fluid data source that's been helping us to get closer to that real time. It's not quite real time yet, but it's helping us to understand the trends as they occur throughout the year on a weekly, monthly basis, as opposed to waiting for that annual street count, which is critically important and a requirement for federal funding. It's an important tool for local planning, but we need that kind of data feed throughout the entire year. So those are some of the examples for the best practices that we're seeing right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. No, thank you very much. There's a tremendous amount of work that's underway, a tremendous amount of data, and all of this is coming into a funnel. So when we look at those 300-plus local strategies and then coming down to the best practices nationally, and I'll show you a graphic on that in just one moment. Any other questions on this slide? Excellent. We'll take a look then at the work underway. So all of this work is driving towards that portfolio of regional strategies. And we really do see this as a portfolio because it's critically for each, for each community to do two things. One, to figure out what is their role in addressing homelessness. And two, what is the most appropriate way for them to carry out that role? So is it housing? Is it services? Is it shelter? Is it prevention and diversion? Is it coordination? It's likely, to varying levels, all five of those different areas. And so we want to be able to provide a range, a number of different opportunities to really meaningfully and fully engage in this work. We are very focused on geographically dispersing the homeless assistance programs throughout the entire region. And we applaud Glendale for your investment in this space. It's critically important. People are able to stabilize much more quickly when they're able to do so in what they consider to be their home community. And so thank you very much for helping in that regard. We want to support communities because we know that a number of communities might not have offered homeless assistance programs before and may be doing so in new ways. And so we're just about wrapping up a study right now on looking at the absolute best practices, the most effective practices for citing new homeless shelter housing and services. And we're very eager to make those results available to you and to all communities throughout the region. We are also taking a look at those municipal investments, such as Glendale and such as your counterparts throughout the region, because we want to understand what is the investment being made right now? What are the opportunities for expanding that? And what is needed to implement those new strategies? So as we prioritize those strategies for implementation, we will be conducting a cost analysis. So then when those strategies are being implemented, we'll know how much it will cost, the kind of impact that it will have, and who it will serve very specifically. Yes, ma'am?
I have to go through the Vice Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Clark.
This is related to the whole discussion of homelessness, but there are two issues that have always concerned me. And one is, you mentioned dispersal of services and shelters. But we don't do that very effectively. No community does. We tend to cite them in low socioeconomic demographic areas. Is there any consideration giving, given to the concept of true dispersal? Because we create our own patterns in that we locate all of the social services in low, low economic areas. We draw everybody and we exacerbate the problem within that one area within the community. That is a concern of mine. The second concern of mine is something that I've raised with Ms. Moreno, and that is, I know that the federal government is at some point going to require an analysis from every community of their affordable housing stock. And that they may use the cudgel of CDBG grants and withholding those from, excuse me, communities if they don't meet certain criteria. So I would like to know if you've heard anything more about my second item and your response to my first question.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark. Really do appreciate those, those two questions. In response to your first question, you know, when I first came to the Valley more than 25 years ago, I started off working in the homeless field. And so being able to return to this work has been a bit like coming home to me. One of the programs I worked in was dispersed transitional housing. And I saw firsthand the very, very positive impacts of that dispersed housing in the sense that there might be one house in a neighborhood that belonged to that transitional housing program, and people couldn't tell. You know, there wasn't a sign out front. And I can't tell you how positive that was for the families there because then they saw all around them role models for stability. And it was very instructive. And it wasn't like they had to sit down in a class. They saw like, well, okay, they're getting up every morning and going to work, and their kids are going to school. And just kind of getting in that rhythm, that very stable rhythm. And they're more successful in maintaining that rhythm after they left the program. We also had housing where it was congregate, where every single apartment in that complex or every unit in that, in that immediate area all belonged to that housing program. We still saw success there, but it was much more successful when it was dispersed. And so we're really looking at high-impact, low-profile ways for homeless assistance programs to enter communities. And that's important, one, because it doesn't create a strain or burden on that community. It's also really critically important because it provides that great role modeling for the clients who are being served because they're embedded in the community. Lisa had mentioned community first out of Austin, and I absolutely love that model. And they say homelessness isn't about housing, it's about community. It's about people feeling a sense of community, being part of that culture. When I used, my first assignment was actually at CAS at the downtown shelter. And we saw people, not rarely, leave the shelter very successfully. You know, they have the job, they have the housing, they have the supportive services, but they came back. And they came back because that's where their community was, that's where their family was. So part of this is how do you create a culture around stability? How do you create that culture so as people are leaving homelessness, they're entering into a more positive, more sustainable, more compassionate culture that they're able to maintain, and that's constructive for the long term? So dispersing the programs is absolutely critical. In response to your second question about the federal analysis of the affordable housing stock, that is a critical area. The calling card of our region, one of them, used to be, hey, we've got this great quality of life, and oh, by the way, we've got really great affordable housing. Good news for property owners, our property values are going up. Bad news for people who are living on the edge, like that, who are living on the cusp of homelessness, more and more often they're falling into homelessness because they cannot afford those increasing rents. We find that particularly true for older adults who are experiencing homelessness. And so I'm not sure whether federal government is going with this. We're hopeful that with the new administration, they'll have some new priorities and importantly, some new resources to bring to the table because this is a critical issue. Right now, we have more than 7,000 people who are experiencing homelessness on the streets. We have just about that many in our shelters throughout the area. And when we look at the impending wave of people who may become homeless for the first time, when the mortarium is lifted on evictions, our system will absolutely be engulfed. We have to start working now, right now, on solutions that will move people very quickly from the streets, from homelessness into stable, long-term housing. And so the time to act truly is now.
I would like to follow up with one comment that continues to concern me, is that at some point in time, what I am concerned about is that the federal government may require cities to create new affordable housing regardless of the zoning of a particular piece of property. And I don't, I don't think that's a good solution for any community. So it's just a comment.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Clark, you know, we really do believe that the unit of government that's closest to the people is often the most responsive. And so we really believe and uphold the value of communities being able to drive their own destiny in this work. That's critically important, and the role of the federal government really is to support those efforts, not to dictate those efforts. We do have experience, because we have been staffing the Continuum of Care, which is a federal structure or a response to a federal structure since 99. So we've had a lot of experience in balancing the requirements from the federal government with the needs and the priorities of our local communities. And so we will continue to closely monitor that moving forward. Thank you for raising that concern. Few other points I just wanted to mention on this slide. One is that we are very focused on creating ongoing tools that can be used by communities. And so we are developing an interactive map that will be, that will show the assets used to address homelessness, such as the shelters, the housing programs, the service agencies, as well as the need. And so being able to illustrate that through population concentrations of people experiencing homelessness, as well as people who are at risk, as illustrated by calls to 211, for example, or through evictions. So that is under development right now. We just sent out the first beta version of that to our member agencies, the cities, towns, counties, native nations, and we're looking for feedback on that. But that tool will be maintained on an ongoing basis, really to support local planning as well as that regional planning. Outreach is a critical area in this. I'll get into more detail on that in just one moment. The role of law enforcement, though, great questions earlier, and some great conversation around law enforcement and what is their role. They are focused perhaps on enforcement as their primary responsibility, but often they are the very first point of contact with people who are experiencing homelessness. So they're in, they are in a unique position really to be able to help connect people who are experiencing homelessness with really critical services, shelter and housing. So we have a survey out right now that just concluded. We have more than 250 responses to that. We're looking very intently at the possibilities of regionalizing pending the data, the misdemeanor, the repeat misdemeanor offender program, and looking at how do we ensure that there's coordination between law enforcement agencies? So we're not merely moving people from one park to a different park or to a different park in a different city, but we're actually intervening and helping that person to break that cycle of homelessness and be able to enter stability. So we're very, very So, we're very, very focused on that. These are our partners in this work. We're working hand and glove with the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care. Their expertise in this space is really helping very much to shape the direction of this work and helping us to understand the analysis as it's conducted. MAGA, of course, we're very invested in this. Our primary mission is to serve our member agencies, and Glendale is absolutely one of those primary member agencies, along with cities, towns, counties, and the native nations throughout the entire region. The Regional Collaborative is a partnership among six different regional entities. We're all working in homelessness, and we're all working in homelessness at that regional level. So, that includes MAGA, Maricopa County, ASU, the Arizona Housing Coalition, the United Way, and the Vitalist Health Foundation. And so, we're amplifying the benefits of our investments by working together and sharing data and assisting one another. This is the overall flow then for the development of those regional homeless strategies. And you'll note, again, 300-plus local strategies, more than 37 national strategies that we analyze deeply and really pulled out the best ones that pertain to our region. This is 29 regional strategies. We're actually up to more than 40 now, because we keep on finding new opportunities as we conduct this analysis and this research, as well as the outreach. We have our five regional goals, very much focused on housing and service integration, all driving towards the development of that one regional portfolio. And all of this work is supported by research, outreach, as well as coordination.
Just one, Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you. I have a question. I mean, I'm looking at the board of the Maricopa Association, the MAG Consortium of Care Board, and then I'm looking at your slides, and I'm thinking, this is the most information my, I as an elected official have gotten on homelessness in six years that I've served this city. And I don't see, and maybe they exist and I'm not aware of it, but I don't see a gathering of elected officials who drive policy, make funding decisions, who are actually the people who are making the decisions in the region. I don't see where they're actually getting access to this information and collaborating on policies region-wide, where you're not talking about one city has a policy that moves the homeless into... So, I'm just curious if that's part of the strategy, if that's going to be part of the strategy going forward. I see, as an elected official, there's, you know, a lot to know about this, but we don't have access to this information or opportunities to collaborate with other elected officials on strategy, so that we can refine things and that we're working together and doing the same things and not pushing people back and forth across city boundaries.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. April 6th. I hope that everyone will be able to attend April 6th from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock. We are having a forum for elected officials. The invitation will be going out. That date was actually just set today. On an ongoing basis, we do have an opportunity, at least through the MAGA Regional Council and through the MAGA Management Committee. We presented in November, December, January. We're back again this month, and will be April and May, and then moving into the future. We agree. You, as elected officials, are in a unique position, because you deeply understand the needs of your constituents, you know what the priorities are for your community, and you're in a great position to help shape this work, to help drive this work. So, we very much want to be able to engage with you. April 6th will be the first forum for elected officials in this work. We hope it's not the last. We hope to really maintain that level of communication with you. We'll also be having a capstone event in June, where we will be bringing together all of the participants from the various outreach forums together to really look at the approved regional strategies and looking at how do we implement these together. So, I appreciate that and very much want to be able to work with you.
I'm happy to help however I can. And Vice Mayor, if I could continue. I was in a National League of Cities Committee meeting on Sunday, and it looks like, and I don't know what's happened, because I've been busy today, but that cities of all sizes, up to 50,000, I guess, are going to receive direct funding in this American Recovery Act. And a lot of the money's going to have a lot of parameters on it, and a lot of it's going to be focused on this type of service within our community. So, I think we're looking at an opportunity to probably really maybe make, move the needle, as Councilmember Clark had said. I mean, the details are going to be to follow, but what I was shown and what I was, the presentation that I was in, a lot of that money's going to have criteria, that it's going to be focused on affordable housing, homelessness, addressing addiction and other issues that we, mental health. And if we're going to receiving federal fundings with those parameters, as a region, it's even more imperative that we're working together and we're all on the same page and not doing things that are fixing something in our city and creating a problem in the city next to us. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor, Councilmember, we absolutely agree. Through the municipal spending study, we are tracking the amount of COVID relief funding that communities are receiving. Through a recent survey, we did have, we did ask about FY20 funding for COVID relief. We are also going back and doing more analysis around the FY21 funding for COVID relief funding, because we understand that could be one of, and a significant form of funding for these regional strategies moving forward. Absolutely. Thank you. Other questions to this point? Moving forward then, this is our overall timeline. The initial research will be wrapping up for the most part this month. We will continue to take a look at the data that's needed and how to build up that data system, continuing to work with Crisis Response Network, the Homeless Management Information System, through the schools for the education, homeless data, as well as other partners. The initial outreach, we have conducted a number of forums, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. By May, we will be delivering a regional portfolio for approval. We will go before the MAGA Management Committee, the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care Board, and the MAGA Regional Council for approval on those. We want to make sure that those are fully vetted, so that we have consensus to move forward and that we can implement those. Again, we're very focused on action. This is not a long-term planning process. This is looking at the best data that we have right now, conducting a lot of outreach to incorporate diverse perspectives, and then being able to do something together. In June then, we'll quickly pivot to a tactical implementation plan. We'll have that coming before those three groups again for approval by August of this year. Any questions on this? Okay. Again, just a bit more detail then. In each of these areas, research, we are very much looking at those citing considerations as well, and looking at ongoing tools being made available, so that we can support you in your local efforts as we undertake these very important regional efforts as well. Outreach. We've held a number of outreach forums. We've actually touched more than 500 people so far. We have held three outreach forums with a nonprofit community. We started with them, because we wanted to really immerse this work in their experience right from the very beginning. We did also just recently have a forum with housing developers. We have one Thursday with business leaders. If you care, if you care to have more information, please do let me know. We had a philanthropic forum yesterday. Education's being planned. The faith community was last month. The municipal staff forum will be on March 30th, and then the forum for elected officials will be on April 6th. Particularly for the municipal staff and elected leadership forums, we're very much interested in providing all of the analysis, the key insights gleaned to date, both from the research as well as from the outreach, being able to really get their input on, is this the right level of understanding? Are these the right insights to draw from this analysis? And are these the right actions then to support work in this area and action moving forward? Those regional strategies will include that analysis. What are our best assets? What are our best opportunities? Where are the biggest needs right now in this space? And what can we do better together than we would be able to do on our own? And then, moving forward to that tactical plan to implement, where we'll be identifying very clearly who is doing what, with what, and by when, and to what kind of impact, and being able to really demonstrate that accountability as being built solidly into that plan. That is my direct contact information. I do welcome any feedback that you might have now or at any time. We really do look forward to our partnership with you and stand ready to serve you in any way that we can. Thank you very much for your time today and for your partnership moving forward. Are there any additional questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Council, thank you, Ms. St. Peter, for your presentation today. One of the reasons why we invited Ms. St. Peter to present today to the council is for that very reason that Councilmember Tomachov mentioned, is this is a very important discussion to have with elected officials who develop and, to develop the policies related to this. And so, I will continue to communicate with you around the different forums that are available and opportunities for you to provide input. As Ms. St. Peter mentioned, there will be multiple opportunities along the way. And in the meantime, if you have any questions for staff, we would be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was excited. I was going to block some time. I didn't know what time of the day for April 6th in my calendar, and unfortunately, we have an all-day budget meeting that day. So...
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, I'll confer with Ms. St. Peter after today's meeting and follow up with you on other opportunities that there might be available.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank our guests. Thank you, and the others who left. Thank you so much for being here and enlightening us. But to our staff, thank you so much for this lengthy conversation on homelessness. I feel comfortable that we moved the needle a little forward. So, thank you for all of your work, your research. This didn't happen over just a couple hours. It happened over days, weeks, and months. So, to the two of you, thank you. I really appreciate you.
Councilmembers, any other comments, recommendations? Our next item is a city manager's report. Mr. Phelps, is there anything from the city manager's office today?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick items. First of all, we want to congratulate our owners of Cuff, who have reopened in the new location across from Murphy Park, and we understand that they're open Monday through Saturday, and they're going to have a lot of their favorite menu items from their prior location. Also, on the Loop 303, one of our big projects, the G303 project, opened the first half of their 1.2 million square foot facility. Interesting to note that the jobs are very competitive for these types of logistics and manufacturing centers. This particular center actually has a full-court basketball facility built into it, as a weight, as amenity to its employees. So, it really is showing kind of the change that employers are having to do to attract really good, quality employees. And then, finally, today, today here at the Civic Center is the second day of our dispensing of 200 second-dose vaccines for, as a pod, and we're continuing to work with our health provider to see if we can get additional vaccines here at this site. But today, we'll be finishing out those who are in the Phase 1B and Phase 1A priority list, and that's my report.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Bailey, do you have anything?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council items of special interest. Each council member will have the opportunity to indicate topics they would like to have discussed at the council at a future workshop. Councilmember Aldama?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Yeah, I've got a council item of interest with regard to downtown. I request the council hold a visioning retreat to create a vision for downtown Glendale to include special events, beautification, short-term and long-term goals, funding and budget. I request that the visioning retreat be held no later than April 13th, and I'm available to meet with our staff as soon as possible to help lay out what this visioning retreat could look like. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you. I have nothing, but I would support the concept that Councilmember Aldama just iterated about some kind of visioning retreat for downtown, and I'm willing to give it one more shot.
Councilmember Malnar?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Vice Mayor.
Dan, I don't have anything else. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
No move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Turner, a second by Councilmember Malnar. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.